Test, test.
UGTV will be live in about 20 seconds.
We're live on UGTV and YouTube.
Thank you all. Before I begin, I want to address the public who is on site. If you're interested in addressing the Commission on the Public Hearing Agenda regarding the Community Development 2021 Annual Action Plan or on the American Rescue Plan Act, please sign up to speak. If you have not yet signed up on your way in and wish to address the Commission on either or both of the public hearings, please go to the front table and sign up. When the item is up for discussion, the clerk will call the names in order according to the signup sheets. You will also announce who's on deck, which means you will be next to the podium. When you come to the podium, please state your name and city of residency for the record. You will be given up to three minutes to state your comments. The clerk will announce when you have one minute remaining to allow you time to conclude your comments. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, some commissioners, staff and public are attending remotely via Zoom, by phone or onsite. All participants joining by phone, please mute your phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. And during the meeting, make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak so the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. Due to COVID-19 requirements, the public is allowed to participate by Zoom or submit comments by email prior to the meeting. Those comments are included in the record of the meeting. Public also has an opportunity to provide brief comments from the lobby of the Municipal Office Building. I'd ask the clerk to please call the meeting to order. Call roll.
Good evening, thank you. Roll call. Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Commissioner Markley had an absent memo. Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows. Alvey.
Here.
Thank you. Our vacation is being given by Commissioner Harold Johnson, the Faith Deliverance Church of God in Christ.
Let us pray. God who protects us, God who heals us, we honor you this evening. We invoke your presence, your wisdom and your direction. Grant us your directives as relates to the matters set before us on our agenda. I also pray, God, that you would order our steps concerning the rise, the recent rise in COVID cases around our nation and in our community. I thank you for hearing us and answering our requests. That all that we do before your glory, I pray in the name of Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Tonight, we have two parts to the meeting, planning and zoning. First, followed by regular commission, I'd ask the clerk to read the statement required by state law governing the planning and zoning portion of our meeting, followed by the items on the planning and zoning consent agenda.
Mayor Alvey, before, I would like to notify that there was a blue sheet published for the P&amp;Z Consent Agenda for a miscellaneous ordinance authorizing a special use permit at 1705, 1735, 1811 and 1831 South 45th Street, and that was the only change.
And these are on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will read the statement. "We would like to welcome all present to this meeting of the Unified Government Commission. Members of the Commission are Mayor and CEO David Alvey, Commissioner Melissa Bynum, at-large District One, Commissioner Tom Burrows, at-large District Two, Commissioner Gail Townsend, District One, Commissioner Brian McKeonan, District Two, Commissioner Christian Ramirez, District Three, Commissioner Harold Johnson, District Four, Commissioner Mike Kane, District Five, Commissioner Angela Markley, District Six, Commissioner James Walters, District Seven, and Commissioner Jane Philbrook, District Eight. As each petition is called, all persons for or against will be given the opportunity to express their views. If this is the first time that a particular petition has been before the Commission, the Commission has three options. Option one, it can approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission with six votes. Option two, it can override the Planning Commission's recommendation, but it would take eight votes to override. Option three, it can return the matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration together with a statement specifying the reasons for the referral back to the Planning Commission. The Consent Agenda is the first part of the Planning and Zoning Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda have received a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission. Unless there is a request to set aside an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the public, Unified Government Commission or others, then the Planning Commission's recommendation on all of the items on the Consent Agenda will be adopted by the Unified Government Commission at one time." I will read the list of agenda items on the Consent Agenda, and when I have completed the list, the mayor will ask if there are any requests to set aside items from the Consent Agenda. This is your time to stand up and request that an item be set aside if you do not agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. If you are present in lobby or raise your hand if you're joining us by Zoom. If you contacted the UG Clerk's office, that item will be set aside by the UG Clerk on your behalf. If an item is set aside, the matter will be discussed and voted on separately. All items not set aside will be approved with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening, and we recognize the importance of each petition. We would, however, remind you that there are a number of items on the agenda, and we would appreciate your efforts to make your remarks as concise as possible. We ask that anyone with a cell phone, please turn them off or switch to non-audio so you will not disturb the meeting. Once the petitioners make their presentation, anyone for or against will be allowed the maximum three minutes to state their views. This is your time to raise your hand or go to the microphone of attending in the lobby. When your name is called, please state your name and city for the record. The mayor and commission are required to disclose contacts with proponents or opponents on any item on the planning and zoning agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact with proponents or opponents on any agenda item?
I'm not seeing any.
Yes, there is. Sorry, David, it took me a minute. It's Commissioner Philbrook, and it's MPL 2021-007, MPL 2021-009, and sorry, and COZ 2021-20, and COZ 2021-21, all in favor of those, all pro.
I think that completes it.
I will now read the items on the Consent Agenda. Planning and zoning consent agenda. Change of zone applications, COZ 2021-020, NP Turner Industrial LLC. Change of zone from R1 Single Family, RP4 Planned Garden Apartment and RP5 Planned Apartment Districts to MP2 Planned General Industrial District for continuation of the warehousing, distribution and light manufacturing development at 725 North 74th Drive, recommended for approval. Item number two, COZ 2021-021, NP Turner Industrial LLC. Change of zone from R1 Single Family and C1 Limited Business Districts to MP2 Planned General Industrial District for Turner Logistics Center, East Building 5 at 900 North 69th Street, recommended for approval. Special use permit applications, item number one, SP 2021-042, Brian Stokes, special use permit to keep farm animals at 734 South 76th Street, recommended for approval for two years. Item two, SP 2021-045, James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects, special use permit for auto storage and maintenance building at 1037 South 26th Street, recommended for approval for two years. Item three, SP 2021-053, Deborah Beauchamp. Renewal of a home occupation special use permit for a short-term rental Airbnb at 11827 Marks and Road, recommended for approval for five years. Item four, SP 2021-054, Corinne Chelieri. Renewal of a special use permit for a short-term rental Airbnb at 3846-3848 North 123rd, recommended for approval for two years. Item five, SP 2021-057, MKEC Engineering, Inc., special use permit for earth and fill at 1930 South 74th Street, recommended for approval for two years. Item number six, SP 2021-058, Laurel L. Sanchez. Renewal of a home occupation special use permit for a homestead Montessori Farm School at 3800 Weaver Court, recommended for approval for five years. Vacation applications, item number one, VAC 2021-007, Blair Thedinger. Vacation of an alley at 415 Stein Avenue at 1417 South Fifth Street, recommended for approval. Plan review applications, item one, PR 2021-017, Stacy Bowen. Preliminary plan review for the redevelopment of Lot 47 in the Plaza at the Speedway Whataburger at 10780 Parallel Parkway, recommended for approval. Item two, PR 2021-018, Daniel Shore-McCarry with Dugan Design Group. Preliminary and final plan review for a Chipotle restaurant at 7750 State Avenue, recommended for approval. Miscellaneous, item number one, MPL 2021-007, NP Turner Industrial LLC. Master plan amendment from low-density residential to industrial at 725 North 74th Drive, recommended for approval. Item two is MPL 2021-009, NP Turner Industrial LLC. Master plan amendment from low-density residential to industrial at 900 North 69th Street, recommended for approval. Miscellaneous ordinances. Item one, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit to operate a transitional group home at 933 Quandero Boulevard, recommended for approval. Item two, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a mechanic used auto sales and continuing import-export business at 900 South 66 Terrace, recommended for approval. Item three is an ordinance authorizing a special use permit to operate a new automotive repair, auto body and used car sales business at 927 Kansas Avenue, recommended for approval. Item four is an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for continuation of an auto body shop at 744 Kansas Avenue, recommended for approval. And item five is an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for continuation of short-term rental Airbnb at 2706 Extron Lodge Lane, recommended for approval. That represents all the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Does that include the blue sheet?
It does, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Does any member of the commission or any member of the public wish to set aside, or staff, which has set aside any item on the consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the planning and zoning consent agenda will be voted on by one vote to follow the recommendation of the planning commission.
This is Gunner Hand Director of Planning and Urban Design. Staff requests special use permit 2021-045, James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects. Be set aside from the consent agenda so we can remand it back to the September 13, 2021 City Planning Commission here.
Thank you. An entertaining motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve, Ramirez, all items that submitted.
Townsend, second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That takes the set aside item number B2, special use permit application, SP 2021-045, James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects for an auto storage and maintenance building at 1037 South 26th Street. The Planning Commission recommended approval for two years. Staff, opening remarks, please.
And you, Mr. Mayor, this is Gunner Hand Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this case was, has been resubmitted by the applicant. They had a change to the site plan after the City Planning Commission had recommended approval to the Board of Commissioners. We had since continued it from the July 1st meeting, and now staff would like to remand it back to the City Planning Commission so we can rehear the revised site plan.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
All right. Just Sullivan?
Yes, this is Jim Sullivan.
Yes, do you have anything, like to present your application? Request is to send this back to the Planning Commission.
Yes, we'd like, together with the staff, recommend that the application be remanded back to the September 10th Planning Commission meeting due to a change in the plan layout.
Thank you. I'm now open the public hearing. The clerk have received any notification from the public?
None were received.
Anybody present who would like to speak in opposition to this?
There are no hands raised.
Like anyone in support would like to speak?
No hands are raised.
Anyone in the lobby?
No appearances.
How about anybody from Timbuktu? All right, hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. Entertainer motion, any questions or comments from the commission? Seeing that, I entertain a motion.
Move to remand the, move the application back to the Planning Commission to redeliberate the site.
Townsend, second.
Roll call. Second, roll call, please.
Roll call, Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Now, I have to ask, legal, did that include? Or, Gunnar, do you understand, was that both items together, or do we have to set these separately?
It's only a special use permit, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That is it then, right? Miss something?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That ends, concludes the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting. We'll now move to the regular portion of our agenda. Regular consent agenda, does any member of the commission or county administrator wish to set aside any item on the regular consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the regular consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
McKeonan moved to approve as submitted.
Second, Philbrook.
Have a motion in the second. Roll call, please, please.
Roll call, Townsend.
Aye.
Keonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson. Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. Kane.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider approval of the 2021-2022 Community Development One Year Action Plan. I ask Mr. Bach to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Bach, County Administrator. Annually, we review our community development budget and plan for the upcoming years. Tonight, we are here to make a public presentation regarding what is in the plan, what we're proposing to move forward, and also to conduct a public hearing to get additional input from the public. I will recognize Wilba Miller, Director of Community Development, to make presentation. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, the County Administrator and visitors. The Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas receives an annual allocation of entitlement funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following programs: Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Programs. In order to receive these funds, the Unified Government must submit an annual action plan to HUD. The 2021 Annual Action Plan is the fifth and final year of the Community Development's 2017 to 2021 five-year plan. The annual action plan consolidates these three grant programs into a single application, which includes a description of the projects and activities expected to be undertaken using grant funds and any expected program income. The plan also includes actions that we expect to take during the program year to pursue strategies described in the five-year plan. The UG must hold two public hearings to inform the community about the plan, the plan process, and to obtain community input. The first public hearing was held on March 12, 2021, prior to developing the draft plan. The draft plan was published on June 10, 2021, and citizens were given 30 days to comment. We are now fulfilling the second public hearing requirement tonight. The plan budget is summarized by the following slides and is shown by grant program and activities. The Community Development Program was allocated 2,003, or 2,362,404, and there are examples of CD eligible activities. On the next slide, we show you the 2021 grant, which includes the following project activities by percentage, and then the following slide by actual project. You can see that we're doing the emergency home repair for $600,000, the housing management inspections, 524,908, public service activities, 168,000, NRSA initiatives, 570,000, public facility and infrastructure, 33,770, and the administration of 465,726. The 570 NRSA activity will also be the fifth and final budget in the five-year NRSA plan, and funds are proposed to be used in City Park North. NRSA stands for Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. Please note that the 2019 and 2020 CDBG NRSA funds and the amount of 1,350,000 are still open and will be used to fund improvements in Clifton Park. used to fund improvements in Clifton Park. Per HUD's instructions, we are also including approximately four hundred and seventy thousand of twenty fifteen grant, CDBG grant funds that require reprogramming to meet spending deadlines. The funds were originally slated for housing activities in District One and Six and will be reprogrammed to public facility improvements in those areas. Activities that can include construction or reconstruction, not maintenance, of infrastructure such as parks, recreation and community facilities, curves, sidewalks, and street improvements. The next grant program is home, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine, with some examples of eligible activities. The twenty twenty-one grant includes the following percentages and the following program activities, direct activities, chip homeownership assistance, two hundred and twenty-three thousand one twenty-three, sub-recipient, new construction rehab, a hundred and ninety thousand, Toto set aside new construction rehab, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and administration limited to ten percent, which is eighty-nine thousand two thirty-six. The next grant program is the Emergency Solutions Grant of one ninety-six, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Examples of eligible activities are in this slide, and the percentages are on the next slide where we have client services from one eighty-one eight eighteen, and then seven point five percent admin, fourteen seven forty-two. The next slide. Additional updates, wait, I'm sorry. The plan must be submitted to HUD forty-five days prior to the fiscal year that starts October first, which means submission of our Annual Action Plan can be no later than August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Failure to submit by August fifteenth will also automatically result in loss of funds. We also wanted to provide some additional information in addition to the proposed twenty twenty-one action plan. The Unified Government has allocated the following: the Community Development Block Grant COVID Funding, two allocations totaling two million one forty-three nine eighty. The Unified Government has entered into an agreement with the Community Health Council in partnership with the Health Department in the amount of one million two hundred thousand dollars. Thirteen community workers will be hired to assist in COVID-related activities such as testing, vac vaccinations, and other COVID-related resources. The balance of CDBG COVID funding will be used in conjunction with the Home American Rescue Plan Grant Funds to be discussed later. The Emergency Solutions Grant also received two allocations totaling two million three ninety-one five seventy-seven. These funds were allocated through a request for proposals process that included ranking and review by staff and members of our continuum of care. The Unified Government has entered into agreements with seven partners who provide the following COVID-related services: emergency shelter, prevention, rapid rehousing, and street outreach. These partners also went through a second RFP process and will receive a second allocation only after the expenditure of the first round of funding. The Home American Rescue Plan Act, we received three million one ninety-seven nine oh three. At this time, we know that these funds are required to be used to create affordable housing solutions for those experiencing homelessness and at risk of homelessness. HUD headquarters and field office have advised us not to undertake any planning activities until regulations and guidance are released this fall. This will require a substantial amendment to our twenty twenty-one action plan that we hope to approve tonight, but it will come before commission again for submission. A resolution calling for the adoption of the twenty twenty-one action plan and attachments will be presented for commission approval tonight following this public hearing. Finally, upon adoption of the twenty-one action plan tonight and submission to HUD, we will begin the process to develop our new twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six five-year consolidated plan in August to be submitted to the commission for approval by midsummer twenty twenty-two. This concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Before we take public comments, I'd ask the clerk to read the statement governing this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to welcome all present to the public meetings of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas regarding the Community Development's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan and the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. We appreciate the attendance of those here this evening, and we recognize the importance of your views. We would, however, remind you that there are no individuals signed up to speak for the Community Development twenty twenty-one Action Plan, and one person signed up to speak and three emails to be read for the American Rescue Plan. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. Should you go to the two-minute mark, I will announce that you have one minute remaining, and that will allow you time to wrap up your comments. Once you are recognized, please state your name and city for the record, and we would appreciate your efforts to be considerate to all during their comments. We ask that anyone with a cell phone could please turn them off or switch to non-audio.
All right, clerk, did we have anyone from the public sign up to speak, or we did, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we have a hand raised.
Okay. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm confused. Are we taking public comment now on the CDBG plan, not the American Rescue Plan, correct? My second question is, what's that?
That's correct. We are just taking on the Community Development Block Grant Program at this point.
And the second question is how, when we move to the American Rescue Plan, those that are present virtually, how will we recognize those that want to speak that are online? It's not clear on this process yet.
Well, I think when we get to that piece, that's a separate hearing. I think we'll explain how that works. The clerk is conducting that part of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
There are no hands, other hands raised.
I did raise my hand.
Mr., so who is, again, clerk, Bridget, are you conducting this, coordinating this?
Looks like this, Broderick Crawford has his hand up to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'll raise two issues. One, I'm concerned that as the rules were read, that this indicates or satisfies the requirement for a second public hearing. I'm concerned because I'm not confident that the public truly had an opportunity tonight to be able to, to log into the Zoom or UGTV or any other mechanisms in order to speak. I myself had to call or text some of the commissioners to get the right codes for the night, tonight. The, the notice that went out on July the twentieth for tonight's meeting had no mention of a meeting ID or a passcode in order to get in this meeting. So I'm saying for, as a community resident, that I don't believe that this should qualify as a public hearing because the public wasn't truly engaged and invited to participate. Thank you for your time.
We have a tenants Tyler with a hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I just want to echo what Mr. Crawford said. That's what I raised my hand for. There was no indication of where the public meeting was going to be, and also the link that was provided, the Zoom link, is not working. So I echo what he says as far as there should be a second meeting, second opportunity that should be given for public input.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public available to speak?
We do have a member of the public that requests to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I did not understand that, Bridget.
We have a member from the public that would like to speak.
Thank you. Please state your name and city of residency, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Lisa Walker Yeager, and I am actually wanting to third that motion. No one knew about it, and I'd like to stand up and make sure that this is heard. I am part of the community, and I would like to make sure that you all revisit this whole situation, please. Thank you for our community, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present from the public?
There are no other members.
Thank you. I would ask, Ms. Miller, if you could address the concerns that were raised? You are muted, Wilba.
Here we go. We put an ad in the Echo, the Globe, the KC Hispanic News Dos Mundo's in June, providing information and detail on the annual, draft annual plan, and in that, we also talked about submitting comments. We talked about the virtual public hearing that would be held tonight and referred people to the clerk's website for that information. In addition, I know that livable neighborhoods, the UG News, and other staff within the Unified Government has shared this with a lot of the neighborhood groups and the public. It is also on our website, and it's been out there since June the tenth.
Commissioner Philbrook?
I don't know. I guess I'm just kind of confused about, about why there's multiple people that were having problems with the link that they, that they found, and I want to ask them, I want to ask them, if you don't mind, where exactly they got that link from that they were trying to come on to our meeting with. First, I'd like to clarify that before I even ask any other questions. Is it, is that possible?
Tanise Tyler has her hand up.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't properly introduce myself the first time. So my name is Tanise Tyler. I am the Executive Director for Northeast Economic Development Corporation. To answer the question from Ms. Philbrook in regards to the link that everyone was provided, there was a website that was given. I did put it in the YouTube link, someone put it in the YouTube link, so you'll be able to see it there.
Something went wrong.
That YouTube link, or excuse me, that, not YouTube, on you, on your YouTube TV, there's a link in there. That's the link that was provided for this. That was the information that was given for this. If you click on that Zoom link, it does not work. In addition to that, it did not indicate that anyone could appear in person, and it did not indicate where they could appear in person. So I'm not disputing what Ms. Miller said in regards to there was notification given. I think the issue here is what was given was incorrect, so therefore, you may have a shortage of people who may want to speak up in regards to the situation. And I'm done speaking.
Mr. Mayor, we have Melvin Williams with his hand up.
Thank you. Right, Mr. Williams? Who is asking to speak?
Mr. Williams, you're able to speak.
I'm sorry. Again?
Mr. Williams, you're able to speak if you can unmute yourself.
What come ya just didn't post it on social media? Don't nobody really read the newspapers no more? Ya post everything else on social media? Facebook, Twitter, whatever? Because I see all kind of stuff on Twitter, Facebook, but as far as links wise, ya don't post this stuff. You know, I just feel like ya just want to keep people in the dark about everything, so ya could do.
Mr. Williams, could you give us again your city of residency, please, which I'm sure is KCK?
Yeah, it's Kansas City, Kansas.
Yes, thank you. I see the hand up from the public.
Mr. Mayor, we also have Broderick Crawford, who is asking to speak again.
Hey, Mr. Crawford?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, who's speaking next?
Broderick Crawford.
Mr. Crawford, you can speak if you unmute yourself.
Now, it wasn't a problem of me unmuting. For the record, whoever's handling your IT took me out of the panelist mode. So after I gave my initial comments, he took me out of the panelist mode. So when I raised my hand and you gave permission, I was unable to do so because he had to let me back in. Again, this is a barrier to public comment with how even this is, even is occurring tonight. You, you allow me in to speak, then you take me out, and then you give me another opportunity, and I'm muted from the IT guy. So my response to Ms. Miller is yes, I do believe that she did put effort out there to give information, but the effort was, the information was not complete. I'm currently looking at the email that was sent to me on June twentieth, and when you click on that link, it requires a meeting ID. Nowhere in that communication is there a meeting ID. Even when I was given the meeting ID by commissioners, then I have to have a passcode. There's nowhere in that system that has a passcode. That's unacceptable. Yes, you put information out, but the information wasn't provided so public can access it. That's all I'm saying.
Again, we have someone in the lobby, Ms. Yeager?
Hi, yes, my understanding that this is a continual problem, not just with this meeting, but several meetings where people wanted to speak, not able to speak, being muted when they wanted to speak up, along with the fact that your tax sales are being held the same way. So this is a problem, and we need to get it corrected. If you can, please take time out to make sure this gets corrected. And then also, I have to second the motion with Melvin Williams on the fact that most people don't read the newspaper that you had stated. Maybe if you would try the call or dispatch post, and again, social media. Thank you.
Are still in the public hearing, recognize Dustin Hare?
Just wanted to echo the sentiments of others. I had to search around for a while to find the link. When I finally did, I found it on dashboards dot my sidewalk dot com. I clicked join the meeting, and it told me multiple times that, that there was no meeting, that the meeting ID was invalid, I believe it said. I had to go around elsewhere and find a meeting link after some more Google searches that finally let me in. Furthermore, on the information that's on that page, it said that this is the ARPA meeting. It says, help us understand how you would like us to spend the local recovery from, funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, and I got into learning that it's a CDBG public hearing. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
But we are currently, we have two hearings tonight. This is currently the CDBG public hearing. There's a second hearing that will address the ARPA funds.
Thanks for that clarification.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the actual funding of CDBG, notwithstanding that there were some issues hooking up with this that we have to address, but if there anyone from the public who did find the leak, did get on, and would like to address this, this is a good opportunity to do it.
Professor Stafford Gray had his hand up.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, professor?
No, it's Deborah Stafford Gray. I'm from Kansas City, Kansas.
I'm from Kansas City, Kansas. And I too had problems trying to get into the link. I know it's kind of being rhetoric over and over. But on the website and on the notice that I got by email, it said ARPA meeting was for tonight. Ms. Miller gave information that was very informative that I listened to after taking about 30 minutes to get into the site. So I was wanting to discuss the ARPA on the community, you know, grant. But I think you said that the CDBG is now, what was discussed this evening? Am I correct?
Just at this moment. We have a second hearing after this is closed to discuss the ARPA grant.
And when would that be, this evening or another?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
It'll be this evening?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll wait. Thank you.
Again, any additional comments on the CDBG?
We have no other members of the public.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bach, I'm going to recommend that we bring this to a future meeting to accommodate and make sure that we have all of these things operational.
Yes, sir. We will work to address any of the link issues that are out there that all the people that were signing on tonight were talking about.
Thank you. All right. All right, I will now close the public hearing. And any members of the commission have any questions or comments? Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking at our Unified Government of Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas Facebook page. And we did make a Facebook post just today publishing our Unified Government E-News weekly update for July 29. And when I got that this morning, I also shared it to my Facebook page. So we're using those tools. However, I have to say, when I open the news and read it, it speaks to our meeting tonight, but provides no link for our meeting tonight. It says, "Planning for recovery, help us prioritize. Join us this Thursday, July 29 at 7:00 PM." But does not provide a link. It does, however, provide a link to our special session on COVID that we held at 6:00 PM. So I'm going to say that I think that we did a good job and left out an important detail, which was how to actually join the meeting. So I would be in support of an additional session. And thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I will hold my comment for a moment. I believe Ashley Hand has a comment to make.
We do apologize for any confusion regarding the login. It appears that it's the issue of the password. There is a link at the bottom of every single E-News that does go to tonight's session. So if you scroll down to our meeting session with the commission. So I think we're having some access issues because in order to kind of avoid Zoom bombing and things like that, we do need a password-protected session. The information is also on our website under the meeting agenda and special session information that was there for this evening's meeting, as well as access to all of our virtual meetings. So we, you know, apologize for any confusion. It sounds like there's quite a bit of confusion over the agenda itself. But please know that our website does have that information. And E-News did include the same link that we've been using for all meetings at the end of each newsletter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm just going to echo the words of Commissioner Bynum. I know this is, we have these links on our website all the time. But it seems like this is the first time someone has, a lot of people have been pretty vocal on not being able to get in. And so my thought is, how many people in the past have had this same issue? And so I just want to make sure that when we overlook, when we look over this again with staff, that try and find it, make it sure it's more accessible for the community. Because especially for the next topic of our public hearing, which is the federal funding we get, we're getting from the American Rescue Plan. And a priority that we have, as a commission have said, is we want it to be community-driven. And so we want to make sure as many people from the community voice their opinion and how they think and their thoughts on that. So just a thought I just had is, if we've had this many people, how many people in the past have also had the same issue? But we don't know that. We don't know about that. So I just ask that staff moving forward, we try and make it more accessible. And I thank you for what you do. And I know it is on the website. But sometimes, not everyone in this county has a computer or Facebook or Twitter. So I just find, let's figure out a way to make it more accessible for everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for maybe legal and for Ms. Miller. Is there enough time to have another one of these sessions, another public hearing, without jeopardizing the spending of the funds that were identified tonight? Without losing that and giving the public another opportunity, another bite at the zapple?
This is Wilba Miller, the Director of Community Development. We have to have the document approved and submitted to HUD before August the 15th. So I don't know what kind of meetings are scheduled between now and then. But HUD really doesn't want me to wait till the very last minute. And August the 15th is on a weekend. So we would have to be very, very quickly. One of the things that I think might be important is that all comments received are typed up and summarized in our document when we submit to HUD. So comments that we've gotten tonight, we will be putting in the document now.
Right. But in case someone had some substantive comments, the comments I've heard had to do tonight more with process and accessibility. So would it be possible just to have another opportunity for the public to express in a public session whatever comments they wanted to about the CDBG budget?
Commissioner, this is Doug Bach, County Administrator. I believe you could take the action to leave the public hearing open tonight. We've met all the requirements by HUD for all publications. As you all know, we did a public hearing earlier in the year. We had opportunities for people to submit written comment. We received all those. So tonight's public hearing is one that's required by HUD to be done right before the actual adoption is going. So you could leave your public hearing process open. We could advertise again that people can join, like the 45ers who joined tonight for the Zoom site. And then we could come back downtown. The doors are open for people to come in and walk through the doors, as they did, so we can put that out there and let them have additional opportunities to be part of the process. And then you could take action that night, as Wilba notes. That'll put them on a crush, but I believe they could summarize the stuff they have today. And then they would have to have everything together at the last minute, unless there's a, yeah, unless we had a special meeting in between. Otherwise, that would be our next scheduled meeting.
So would there be a motion required to do that, to leave the public hearing open that was open tonight? Identify the next earliest available date for the public to once again come and make comments if they chose to? Do we need a motion on that?
I would go ahead and recommend your next formal meeting, instead of trying to set a special session, which would further create confusion or lack transparency. So August 12th would be that meeting.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Commissioner, this is Ms. Steve Brown, Chief Counsel. Yes, a motion would be in order to leave the public hearing open and continue it to the August 12th timeframe.
All right. I saw moved that the public hearing begun tonight on the CDBG, CDB budget be continued on until, what was the date, August 12? At what time? What would that be?
7:00.
7:00 PM.
Commissioner Mike Kane, second.
Mr., I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Philbrook.
Well, the only thing I was going to say is, is that yes, I'm happy to go forward like this. And I, and thank you, Commissioner Townsend, for that motion. Is that I would like to volunteer to work with Mrs. Hand to help those who are, which is like me. I need instructions for, excuse the expression, dummies, to be able to get on these websites and to be able to connect and all that sort of thing. So if you and I, ma'am, could work together on this, you could give me guidance, and I can help you know just how tough it is, okay? Because all y'all do this stuff all the time. And I appreciate any help. So I just want to donate my slow brain to this, okay? If you don't mind.
Much appreciated. And again, our apologies for any confusion regarding this. There's a lot of information out there to track. And so we really appreciate the concern and appreciate that you're giving us additional time to potentially hear the community feedback on this.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my comments are more for clarification. What are we postponing till the 12th exactly? Because I know Wilba said she needs to submit everything by the 15th. And that leaves very few time, very little time for her to get everything, compile it, and submit it to HUD. And then like she said, the 15th falls on a weekend. So then that may leave her one or two days before the actual weekend to get anything done. So the 15th, are we, is that when we're going to close the public hearing and adopt the CDBG budget? The 12th? The 12th?
Yes, that would be the action you would take then. You would see if there are any additional comments and close, adopt the CD, Community Development Budget. And then Ms. Miller would have to surmise any additional comments that come in that night to add them to part of the plan that she would submit the next day, I believe would be your action, Wilba.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do, I do support it, but I'm just cautioning with, because with staff, that's a very, very quick turnaround. And so I just want to make sure that it, I'm just cautious about it. I do support the move, but I'm just cautious about it. I don't want, I just want to make sure that staff has ample time. You know, this is a very important application, a very important part of what we do. And I want to make sure staff has the time to turn it in, in time. Thank you.
Mr. Bach, it is important to note that we do submit this through a computerized program. And if the computer is down and we don't get it in, we'll be done with submission. You know, I'm not saying that the computer will be down on the 12th or the 13th. But we have to have everything with the mayor's signature into them by August 15th.
All right, I think that's a good caution, Ms. Miller, that we could, because all the people that signed on tonight felt like there might be others that didn't have the opportunity to comment over the past several months. We could lose our community development funding, but this process is outlined. Mayor, Commissioner Burrows, I'm raising my hand for him. He has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Commissioner Burrows, I think there's two things here that we have a non-clarification of being able to get on. I've received numerous emails this evening asking for the passcode and having been taken out. I might suggest that, I know as, when I administer Zoom, when I allow, when it's allowed people to speak as a panelist, when they're done, we, I usually leave them in until that particular issue is finished. I don't know what our practice is, but it may be that some of them may want to respond or continue on. So I would just kind of like to get some clarification on that. And, Wilba, is there any opportunity for us to ask for an extension due to the recent outbreak of Delta?
No, Commissioner, they do not. It's by federal law, August 15th.
Okay. Thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify, if there was an opportunity for us to ask for an extension, that we should do so. But if that is not allowable, then I understand the time crunch that we're under. But with the confusion of the public, transparency is a hot topic and a big issue. And the community deserves to have an opportunity to weigh in on the issues before us this evening. So I support the motion. I would just hope that we have an opportunity at the next meeting that it's not a heavy agenda, that in case there's those that want to come forward, we'll have a chance to do that and still allow staff enough time to add that to the testimony and move it through. So, thank you, Wilba. I appreciate it.
The only thing else I would caution is if enough people made comments that commission decided to make changes to the one-year annual plan, we probably would not have the time to get any changes through in time for the deadline.
Mr. Bach, I'm going to recommend that we would convene a special meeting Thursday, the 5th.
Thursday, the 5th, Mayor?
Yes.
And so you would like to, that would provide the opportunity for this motion to be amended? To change that date to extend it to that time if Commissioner would so choose?
I'm okay with that. Commissioner Kane?
As well am I. I am supportive of the amendment to the motion to change the date from August 12th to August 5th. Is that it? Thank you.
Kane, second?
We have a second. Thank you. Commissioner Bynum.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify with Wilba Miller that anyone who would like to comment on the CDBG one-year action plan that we're talking about does have that opportunity to provide that comment to your department in writing right now, correct?
Yes, the ad that we put in for the draft plan said that they had any way, they could contact the clerk, they could do it in writing to our offices, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm supportive of our August 5th plan, but I wanted to make sure that the public understands there's more than one way to submit comment on this action plan. And it does include communicating directly with your office. Thank you. Would you like to provide that information one more time here with us tonight on how to submit that to your office?
They could put it in writing to our office at 701 Northerne Street, room 823. Then, of course, our zip code is 66101. They can call the front desk and leave a message with the operator at 573-5100. They can call and ask for me, and I could take their comment. Or any of my, Stephanie Stoffer, who is also at this meeting. Either one of us would take comment from people. They can email me at wmillar@wco, W-Y-C-O-K-C-K.org.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Townsend.
Hi.
McCarron.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Kane.
Hi.
Walters.
Hi.
Philbrook.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Burrows.
Hi.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next, a public hearing regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. I ask Mr. Bach to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're, as we brought forward to the commission a couple of weeks ago, we started to talk about some additional things coming forward with American Recovery Plan Act. As we were going through, we kind of put it up into three different areas where we were. As we were going through, we kind of put it up into three different areas where we're looking at funds that were lost revenues, that were fairly straightforward to where that money would go to help replenish Unified Government operations. And then we have some immediate needs, we noted, but there are also other areas where these plans would be, funds would be eligible to be expended. So with that process, we brought forward the idea to start doing public hearings, get public input to assist the Commission as they make decisions and strategize on where this funding can be spent in the future as we go through this process. So tonight, Kathleen Von Atchian, our Chief Financial Officer, is here, and she's gonna walk through some of the, how the, how the plan works and some of the eligible funding areas. Ms. Von Atchian?
Thank you. This is Kathleen Von Atchian. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and this is a public hearing to consult with members of the community. Or those communities that have been historically underrepresented or underserved in the federal government with the objective to increase coordination, communication, and engagement with community-based organizations and civil rights organizations. And this is all encouraged by the U.S. Presidential Order on Advancing Racial Equity in Support of Underserved Communities. So no action's gonna be taken tonight by the Commission. This is simply an opportunity to take public comments for future consideration of the prioritization of the American Rescue Plan Act Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. So additional public engagement events are being planned for the coming months. Before I start, I'd like to direct the public to our ARPA website, which is at W, or wco K C K dot O R G slash A R P A. Or you can, we encourage you to also email us with your ideas at the email address A R P A at wco K C K dot O R G. I am joined in this presentation by Ashley Hand, our Strategic Communications Director, who will provide direction for the opportunity for the public to submit your ideas and comments through a poll that she will be leading. And she will be discussing that in more detail after I make this presentation here tonight. It's a brief, brief presentation. So, next slide, yes, the, so this is the local recovery portion of the American Rescue Plan Act. The ARPA is a huge act that entails a great number of federal grant programs and opportunities. This is only the portion that is being provided directly to local governments, in our case, state, the city and the county. So we are receiving a total of 87 million over a two-year period. And it's actually two recipients, the City of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County, Kansas. The 87 million is the total. City of Kansas City, Kansas, is getting 55 million, and Wyandotte County receive, is receiving 32 million. And the funds are directed in terms of how they can be used, directed by the federal government very specifically. So, and then also I want to mention that we have until the end of 2024 to obligate these funds and have until the end of 2026 to completely spend the funds. So there is plenty of time for prioritization and conversation around how to direct the funds to meet the objectives of the Act. So within those, within the total allocation, there is a provision in the Act that a portion of the funds would go towards recovering, or covering the lost revenue during 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. And as you can see in the chart for Kansas City, Kansas, of the 55 million, 31 million has been calculated based on the provisions of the Act as revenue loss over a two-year period. On the, on the county side, it's 11 million. So that's those two orange numbers there you see. As a result, the remaining amount of funds is 24 million on the Kansas City, Kansas side, and 21 million on the Wyandotte County side that are available for other ARPA categories, which I'm gonna go over in a moment. See, and so just, just to be clear, this isn't a blank check. But, you know, because the federal government does have some very specific requirements, but it is an opportunity to double down on some of our key priorities. So the other ARPA opportunities aside from revenue loss are listed here. There are public health, the negatively impacted communities and industries, disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay for employees fighting COVID, and then infrastructure. And the following, I'm gonna, in the following slides, I'm gonna provide some more detailed detailed descriptions of each of these areas. So in the, in the area of public health, the categories that are eligible uses by the federal government are for vaccination, testing, and contact tracing, for the prevention of incongruent settings such as nursing homes, hospitals, and other areas. It can also be used to do facility repairs that would respond to COVID, such as HVAC improvements. It's also allowed to use the money for communication efforts to get the word out about the vaccination efforts undertaken by the Public Health Department, enforcement, isolation, and quarantine costs, as well as payroll costs related to the public sector that is responding to COVID. There are some eligible uses for mental health and substance abuse and other public health services. For negatively impacted communities, those, those eligible costs include household assistance, job training, small business economic assistance, aid to the tourism industry, other economic support, and to rehire public safe, or public sector staff that were either laid off or not hired, or positions were held vacant during the COVID in order to save costs. Under disproportionately impacted communities, the eligible uses are education assistance, developing a healthy childhood environment, providing housing support, including the development of affordable housing, identifying and addressing the social determinants of health, and providing interventions for community violence. The fourth category is premium pay for employees fighting COVID, not only in the public sector, but also in the private sector. And the very last category is infrastructure, which is very limited to only wastewater, stormwater, and broadband. So at this point, we would like to pass this off to Ashley Hand, who is going to be talking about the poll.
My name's Ashley Hand. I'm Director of Strategic Communications. We're gonna test a new tool today, and I encourage anyone who's listening in the room or downstairs or online to either text UnifiedGovernment123 to the number 22333, or you can go to pollev.com and enter UnifiedGovernment123. So I'll give you all a minute to do that and get online, and I know all of you have phones, so I hope that you will participate. All right. So when you text that number, you should probably get a prompt back. So if you just give me a nod, so I can get a general sense of to... You can scan the code as well. Yep. All right. Commissioner Philbrook, I'm more than willing to help you too. I know you're, you're shaking your head over there. I'm happy to come over and help. All right, all right.
I'd like to remind the Commission that this is for public input, that there will be plenty of opportunities for Commission to weigh in on recommendations later.
All right. We're gonna do a quick test question to get, see if we can test the tool. I just want to get a sense as to if everybody's working. So what is your favorite Kansas City sports team? Oh, well then, we got, we got a strong, solid start. We can give everybody a minute to get that in. You check A, oh, here, I'm gonna do this, it definitely, it's A, B, C, D, or E. There, there you go. There you go. That Sporting KC jumped out so quickly, it took away the, the prompt. All right, so as you can see in real time, we're able to kind of understand what people are thinking, what they're saying. We see it interacting. So the next few questions are an opportunity, and they're open-ended. You can answer more than once, and you can use a few, several words to kind of help us understand how you would answer any of the following questions. All right, so I'm gonna see how we're doing here, and we're gonna close that. There we go. All right, so clearly the Chiefs are winning today. All right, I'm gonna lock this one down, and we're gonna move on to the next one. So our next question for you is, just to help us understand who's at the table, who's in the room, who's online virtually, where in Wyandotte County do you live? Just give us our neighborhood name, so we generally understand where you're at. Good Piper representation tonight, seeing some folks from West Heights and Edwardsville, Rosedale, Armordale, excellent, Argentine, fantastic. All right, with some Bonner Springs, folks. Strawberry Hill. Wait, give it one more, a couple seconds more, see how we go. Pomeroy, excellent. All right. Well, Piper is definitely out in numbers today, as is Strawberry Hill and Rosedale. Excellent. And East and West. All right, I'm gonna give it one more second. Fantastic. So as you can see, you know, we have some pretty good representation across the county, but, you know, noting that this is just one meeting and one opportunity, this will help us also kind of figure out where else do we need to go within the community to make sure that we're pinpointing the type of neighborhoods that are not represented at tonight's conversation or on the various channels that we're offering to provide feedback throughout the ARPA process. I'm gonna lock this and move on to our first big question, which is what is your most immediate need? So as we think about recovery and what does that look like, in a few words, help us understand what's most important. As you saw in the many different categories that were outlined by Ms. Von Atchian, there's quite a few areas where we can provide immediate assistance. So what is the most pressing need in your community, in your neighborhood, and even in your own household? You can enter more than one answer for this question. We're seeing things like affordable housing and workforce. We see parks, pay, infrastructure, business support, a mask mandate, homelessness, parks, increasing rental and mortgage support. Excellent. We're also seeing things like resources for businesses and recreation. There needs to be support in the Northeast, we're seeing. Stormwater, safety. Excellent. Oh, gets get better and better. If you see words that you like, put them in again, and that will make it bigger. Fantastic. It's pretty dynamic. We see you're getting a lot of answers. I appreciate that. Childcare. We see some rehabilitation and training. We see food desert has come up. Excellent. Graffiti. We've definitely seen some issues recently. Broadband. Excellent. Some really good information in here. Let's lower taxes, okay? All right. This is excellent. I'm gonna give it just a couple more seconds because we have quite a few, a couple more questions to go through. And as we get past our most immediate needs, as Ms. Von Atchian outlined for us, we do have several years to address some of these priorities. Water quality, air quality, street improvements, education. No bullying for those who can't wear masks, okay? Sidewalks. Some of these things aren't necessarily covered within ARPA, but they certainly help us understand in the overall arching budgeting process, where are your priorities and concerns? Swimming, that's something that has come up quite a bit this summer, as we all are well aware. And the heat of this week has certainly not made it any simpler for any of us. Excellent. Enforcement. Great. All right, I am going to lock it down in just a second, and we'll move on to the next question. Excellent. Okay, so as we think about the pandemic response, it's not just about what's happening now, but when we think about long-term, what do we want to see for Wyandotte County when we come out of the pandemic? What is the most important response that we can take as a community as a result of what has happened to us over the last 18 months? Food, vaccinations, security. Media, connection to jobs. Excellent. We, clearly, we see, we can see some learning happening as we're doing this, that people that are not putting spaces in between the words are making it string together a little bit easier, so that's helping us with seeing things. Economic support, homeless support. Shelter. Excellent. Economics, I'm sorry, said that already. Equity, community. Food has come up quite a bit. Excellent. Healthcare equity. Great. Inclusive housing, care for the sick. Incentives. Great. Equal resources for the Northeast. An eviction moratorium has also been mentioned. Addressing redlining, which is a key, a fundamental principle of ARPA funding. Connection to jobs, I've mentioned that. All right, it keeps changing, so I'm gonna give you one, just one more minute. This is excellent. Equal resources for East and West. We see some very kind of culturally focused, kind of collaboration, community. Sustainability has been mentioned. Excellent. All right, I'm gonna give it one more second, and then I'll lock this one down. Fantastic. It's gotten, there's so much input here that it's gotten so small. That's a good sign. We'll keep it coming. All right. The last question for tonight is really specific to your community and what would have the greatest impact on your community. We want to know what is most important to you on the long term in terms of ARPA recovery? Did I not activate it? Biologies. There you go. Equitable investment, housing, infrastructure, internet, supporting our food system. Access to opportunity, police presence due to more crime, remote working, transportation. Fantastic. Vaccine education. Increased law enforcement, addressing blight. Representation of neighborhoods like Loring. Housing is a big one. Portability comes up in many different themes. Parks and recreation. Streetlights, stormwater. Entrepreneurship. Addressing blight and redlining. Great. Food deserts. Direct support to residents. Grocery, road repair. So there's definitely a lot of kind of common themes across kind of the most immediate needs, but also as we kind of think during, over the long-term, we're definitely seeing some consistency in the type of themes that were presented tonight. Bike infrastructure, community pride. Tax sale freeze was mentioned. Youth resources. Stimulus. Excellent. All right. This is great. So I'm going to give this one more minute. Using taxes better or lower taxes. Educational resources. Less of a police presence. So a little bit different than some of the other comments. But that's balance that we are always trying to strike. Fantastic. All right, I am going to close this down because I want to point you to another resource that we will be continuing to roll out as we move forward. So as Ms. Von Ashen had mentioned, we have launched a website called And what this does is walk you through some of the basics of ARPA funding, how it can be used, provides you with access to the various presentations that have been made over the last several months that have come before commission so that you can kind of get a little bit of the background on what this money was intended for and some of the many things that are being considered, including the commission principles that they've outlined and defined for the, for us thinking through the spending of this, of these funds. And then there's also a segment within this website that you can link to and join an online forum, which we'll be running several of these questions over the next month, where you can enter in and your ideas. You can support and boost ideas that you appreciate and agree with or add to them through an online dialogue. So this platform is going to be one of the many tools that we'll be using over the next month or so specifically to help us understand both immediate needs as well as some of the more near-term needs. That information, in addition to the email that Ms. Von Ashen mentioned, arpa@yco.kck.org, is another tool where you can directly email the finance department with your ideas and suggestions. And then we will be creating other opportunities, whether online or in person over the next several weeks where you can stay tuned and hear more and participate in this ongoing discussion about what the future of Wyandotte County looks like post-recovery. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Mr. Bach and Mayor, Commissioner Burrows. Ashley, the, the opportunity to participate, is there any way to break this out to, to break it out from staff and/or commissioners putting in their recommendations and flooding the process with their ideas versus actually hearing from the public and allowing them to have an opportunity without being pushed out by, by staff and/or commission? So it shares with the public that they have a fair opportunity and a transparent opportunity to participate in this process?
Absolutely. So we're offering multiple channels for that with that intention to give us the ability to check our data and understand what the community has said. We also are pulling from the community survey data of 2020 that was within, with great statistical relevance to our community and reflects kind of how our community thinks. So we're comparing that input as well. I would like to remind you that our 2,200 employees are residents as well. So we will be creating channels for our staff to participate in these conversations because they too are part of our community. But we absolutely will be offering multiple channels to help people participate and provide input, leaning from existing planning efforts that have gone out into the community to collect feedback at the neighborhood level as well as kind of incorporating some of these larger scale tools that can help us look across the entire county for insights.
And, and I do appreciate that, just for those that were listening, that they actually have a fair opportunity, just as we do, to put it in.
Absolutely.
We're all taxpayers, we're all residents. It's important that they know that we are asking for their input and we're providing a number of avenues for them to do that.
Correct.
And their word is just as important, if not more important than many of us in this, in this committee this evening as well as in the administration and City Hall collectively. So I just wanted to ensure that they understand they have just as fair of an opportunity as we do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would someone describe then what that process will be moving forward?
So we've launched a website to provide information about the program itself, including some of the kind of limitations of how the funds can be allocated. We've launched a public forum online through that website that allows you to answer any of the questions that we posed tonight. And we'll be posing more questions and survey tools and other insights as we gather them. We're also using the tools of understanding what we're hearing on social media over the last 18 months for us to be able to pull insights from what are key priorities within the community, leveraging our community survey data as well to help guide some of the kind of insights that we can infer from that information as it applies specifically to ARPA-related funding.
Could you just explain the timeline for this?
So the near term is to run a series of these questions over the next month to help us particularly around the most immediate needs and understanding some of the most pressing priorities within our community. Recognizing that we have a pretty long time horizon, we will be rolling out multiple opportunities over the course of the next six months, possibly even longer, factoring these things into how we plan with our general budget as well. And so there's a lot of opportunities that we'll be introducing. I'm relatively new to this organization and very excited to be bringing more opportunities in for community engagement in these discussions.
And so if someone came to the meeting tonight or zoomed in on the meeting tonight expecting to make public comments, is that happening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is Doug. After we conclude our opening comments in this process, we were going to recommend the opening of the public hearing.
Thank you. I'd like to get to that. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes, that's perfectly fine, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Von Ashen, do you have any other comments? Okay, Mayor, we are done with our opening remarks and ready for the public hearing.
And Ms. Cobbins, I think you are facilitating this?
We will be facilitating it, Mayor.
Thank you. It's all yours.
Okay, actually, we had one person sign up, Ms. Carolyn Wyatt, to speak this evening when we also have four emails to read behind that.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Wyatt, are you available?
Ms. Wyatt, you're muted. Carolyn. All right, let's go ahead and read the emails and then we can come back to Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. First email is by Megan Pfeifer from Uncle Sam's Academy for Tots. It says, hello, I have received the invitation to the Zoom meeting next week. Our center would like to look at applying for funds to use in this area, provide, to provide premium pay to eligible essential workers. I would also like to ask if these funds be allowed to pay for college courses as well as essential workers like our teachers, who will be dealing with many more developmental and mental and/or mental health issues as more businesses reopen. It will be crucial that employees have the tools they need to de-escalate or interpret a situation with the general public and our customers. Thank you for your consideration, Megan Pfeifer. The second is from Paula Neath from President and CEO of the Family Conservancy. We know Wyandotte County is looking at investments of the American Rescue Plan, funds to support our community in recovering from the pandemic while improving long-term resiliency. The Family Conservancy believes in investment in our childcare infrastructure for our youngest children and their families is exactly what Wyandotte County needs. A $4 million investment of ARPA funding over two years would be strategic in the commissioner's priority for increased economic prosperity of the community and an opportunity for our residents to get back into the workforce. This support would be targeted towards expanding the Family Conservancy's innovative Start Young Program through 2022 and 2024. TFC is confident long-term investments in the infrastructure of the childcare sector in Wyandotte County will provide stability for parents and help make much-needed improvements in the early learning classroom today through a quality learning environment, all while building of the foundation for the next generation's local workforce. Furthermore, we have three years of success and momentum to build from. If you would like, I would be happy to discuss investment opportunities in more detail. Paula Neath. The last is quite lengthy, so I'll paraphrase this. I should say the next to last from Ms. Carrie Rinker from the American Heart Association. She says, the public health crisis and resulting economic stress that has put state, local, and tribal governments under immense strain. As you're aware, the federal government's Treasury Department has allocated $350 billion emergency pandemic funding to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. The American Heart Association understands we are still navigating unprecedented times. Give us some, and given some of the flexible guidance and latitude to support public health needs and recovery efforts, the AHA views this latest distribution of pandemic relief funds as an opportunity to reengage in discussions to address critical needs, areas, and strengthen support for vital public health services. Some of those services include the comprehensive tobacco control programs, hypertension programs, healthy equity programs, and supplemental nutrition assistance programs. We must recognize the intent of ARPA funding to state and local communities to, is to address the severe negative economic impact of the pandemic and ease some of the financial strains from the past years. Feeding recovery and rebuilding capacity requires strategic investments and collaborative efforts at all level. Although we are faced with unique challenges, we can use these fiscal recovery funds as an opportunity to lead the change or the charge in critical public health investments to benefit Wyandotte County's population. Thank you again for your ongoing leadership in responding to the needs of the communities and citizens, especially those that were hit hardest. The AHA asks that you consider the above referenced priority areas as you engage in appropriation discussions. And we look forward to continuing to work with you to address the health issues and longstanding inequities facing Wyandotte County. I just received one on my phone here, which I have now opened, from Emily Wolf with the Metropolitan Energy Center. She says, Mayor Alvey and Commissioners, I am with Metropolitan Energy Center and a lifelong resident of Wyandotte County. Since 1983, MEC has successfully managed millions of dollars in federally funded projects advancing clean, efficient use in the Kansas City metro area, including Wyandotte County and KCK. In an attached letter, we stated why we are urging the UG to consider investing remaining funds from the ARPA to improve the infrastructure in our community. As you continue to work through the process to determine how to utilize the remaining ARP funds, we will, we would love to meet with you to share how our organization can support your efforts. We have over 20 years of experience and expertise promoting and implementing clean fuels, fuel efficiency, and new transportation technology. Additionally, our building performance program is rapidly expanding to help municipalities successfully navigate building code updates to make the built environment more efficient and resilient. Thank you for your efforts to better understand the projects and priorities that are important to community members. Please let us know if you would like us to set up a meeting in the future. Thank you. That is all we have, Mayor, except for Ms. Carolyn Wyatt, who is, I think, now ready.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt?
Unmuted. Okay, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Carolyn Wyatt. I live at 359 Troop, KCK, Northeast area. There was a master plan, Northeast master plan, that never came, came to the process where it should have come. We spent money, but we need a store in the Northeast area. Also, the Quinduro Pool, it needs to be a new one or upgraded. Also, in these parks around here is Clam and Quind, not Quinduro, but Parkwood Park. We could also use a water park. And also, these parks should have bigger swings, also, not only for the children, but older people like to sit in the swing. They take their kids to the, to the park. I've seen where they have parks for senior citizens, where they can sit and they can swing at the same time. Also, we need a diversity inclusion officer because there's one in Lawrence, Kansas, and one that's in Kansas City, Missouri. And also, there is a lot that could be done to Northeast area. There is not a police station in Northeast area, which would bring along development at the same time because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have what we need. But we know that with this Northeast master plan that already, we've paid people who came here to get information about the master plan and paid them all this money, they went back home, but nothing happened. So I think everybody's getting their, their master plan, but we're leaving the inner city out of everything. So I'm thinking that with this money that we have here for the American Rescue Plan Act, Recovery Act, and with the CDG money, there is money that can be invested in Northeast area. And so we're hoping that the commissioners who are listening will realize this also, everything is not out west. We still live down here.
Ma'am, you have one minute remaining.
If we have a mayor and a commissioner that is for the whole city, you can't leave out the Northeast area. We're very vital. There's all kinds of highways down here. Either way you want to go, up north, Kansas City, Missouri, we're here and there's Fairfax. And so I just want to say, just remember the Northeast area. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, we have Louise Lynch online.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lynch.
Yes, thank you for, for that. I've been holding from the beginning of all these meetings and so I appreciate you taking my call. The first thing I want to talk about before I comment is the process during this ARPA problem of the IT. I have not been able to participate because it kicks me out. The other thing is, it is not easy for someone who is having trouble seeing, as I am, as a result of long haulers COVID, to maneuver this or to tell me to type in or email in or any of those sorts. So if it's difficult for me, I am sure it is difficult for many seniors. I am sure it's difficult for those who cannot see or have a vision problem. And we should be able to participate at the same time as everyone else's meeting. To tell us to send in something between now and another time does not give us the same opportunity and respect to voice our opinion for everyone to hear at the same time. So all of those questions you were asking and having people input, it would kick me out every single time. I have not been able to look at screens because of my vision issue due to long haulers. And so this is a huge problem. So I really would like you to make sure that this is a viable way for everyone, not just those who can see, not just those that are young, not just those that are technically challenged or not challenged. All of us deserve a voice at the table at the same time. And now I would like to comment about the ARPA. In regards to that, I have sent in comments and I have had a two-hour discussion with the Chief of Staff from the Mayor's Office back in April, May time period in regards to some of my concerns.
Ma'am, you have one minute remaining.
A call from Mayor Alvey. BPU is a huge issue. A call from Mayor Elvey. BPU is a huge issue. People who are not able to pay their bills because of they are medical devices that they need to use and don't have the money due to COVID should be totally covered. Water should never be cut off from anyone. We are in the middle of a very hot heat season and making the most vulnerable suffer because they are indigent or they are sick and have to choose what to do is not acceptable. I have a whole list of things I would like you to call me, email me, text me, because there are a lot of issues that this money should be going to and going to agencies like Wyco Mutual Aid, who have helped a lot of people in a lot of areas in this community. And I want to thank my Commissioner, Tom Burrows, for helping as many people as he can.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Broderick Crawford.
Once again, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Broderick Crawford, Kansas City, Kansas, Northeast, right off of Eaton State. I'm going to also raise the same issue that I had before, similar to what the previous speaker just spoke to, and that's access. So tonight, as I was trying to get to the word cloud that Ashley was putting together, I don't have equal use of both my hands. So by the time it took me to type and get the things that she wanted me to type in, she was at two or three questions now. So I think many of our, what we're putting forth to the public is accessible to those that are people close to, and we are not necessarily taking in consideration those that may have challenges. And so for me, I got frustrated and I stopped responding because I couldn't type faster enough. Okay, so and again, as the young lady was talking about, those that are visually impaired and other things that they have other options we have. We have a lot of our folks here that have government-issued flip phones. A government-issued flip phone is not going to do all the things I'll, I'll, I'll say phone. I just need a phone to call and text. But I'm probably one step beyond a flip phone myself. Okay, so the types of phones that people have when you're asking for these apps, all of these phones don't accept or maneuver or navigate through these apps the same way that others' phones might. Are we taking that in consideration? Electronic media broadband is not widely available in this county, much different than Google would like you to believe. It is not there. So in the homes of many of the residents that I serve, they don't have broadband. So if that's the only access point, then we're not reaching the masses of folks in our county.
Sir, you have one minute.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I also want us to consider funding to the Northeast, funding to the Parks and Rec, folks that are getting their lights and things turned off for 45 cents. It's atrocious, and I'm going to challenge you all. Who do we want to make it easier for? The staff or the residents? And I do understand the staff are residents, but staff are working. There are many residents that are unemployed, that are hurting, that are in peril, that we're not providing access to. I'd like for us to consider folks that don't necessarily have what we have, and they have a fair and equitable chance to provide comment. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Greg Kendall.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and UG staff. My name is Greg Kendall, President of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council and a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. There are eight areas we'd asked the UG to consider for ARPA funds. One, increased funding for community health improvement programs known as CHIP through the UG Public Health Department. The programs are already underway with goals, strategies, and metrics in place. The challenge is often funding the strategies themselves. Two, additional funding to support small business assistance that have struggled through the pandemic. We encourage funding specifically for the toolbox, alt cap for small business loans to Wyandotte County businesses, and additional funding for the UG Small Business Grant Program. Three, funding up to $150,000 for a future of work study via the YEDC to look specifically at the talent skills needed to be ready for the jobs anticipated to be created in Wyandotte County in the years to come. We need a long-term workforce solutions plan to help us build resilience and ultimately reduce poverty and increase household income while connecting our residents to the high wage jobs in Wyandotte County. Four, funding for programs that lift residents out of poverty through attainment of their GED through collaborative efforts like those being discussed through Made Men, Workforce Partnership, KCK Community College, and YEDC. Nineteen percent of Wyandotte County residents have no high school diploma, largely ensuring a life of poverty and poor health, and who have been heavily affected by the pandemic. Five, funding for programs to assist persons experiencing homelessness. We are seeing an increase in the number of our neighbors who are homeless. This is affecting the attraction and retention of businesses to the downtown and certain public transit locations throughout the county. We recommend identifying and funding programs that provide housing, wraparound services, and a sheltered workshop model that looks holistically at the issue. Six, if you want to expedite urban housing development, we could consider a flexible funding matrix to help fill the gap, particularly as the cost to construct residential homes has significantly increased.
Mr. Kendall, you have one minute remaining.
Quality housing, the UG largely holds the land that needs to be redeveloped, and we have a pool builders now interested in building homes. Unfortunately, there's a gap between what our residents can pay for a home and the cost to build a home. This may be an opportunity to help fill that gap if certain criteria met. Seven, we need additional funding to increase the number of full-day quality childcare spots through organizations like the Family Conservancy. Childcare is incredibly expensive, but it has a major long-term impact on that child's future and whether Wyandotte County will continue to have a high level of poverty. We encourage further discussion on how ARPA funds can help our underserved populations find and afford full-day quality childcare. And number eight, we encourage you to consider utilizing some level of ARPA funds to start the stormwater improvement program. While these funds won't meet all the needs we have, we believe there is a cost benefit to the community and to the UG, which could expedite getting these improvements started. Thank you for your time and consideration for the use of the UG's ARPA funds.
Our next speaker is Dustin Hare.
Thank you. My name is Dustin Hare. I'm the co-founder of Wyco Mutual Aid. We know that COVID-19 had profound impacts on the economic situations of nearly everybody in the country, but it affected low-income, black, and brown folks disproportionately. And in Kansas City, Kansas, that means it impacted the Northeast area disproportionately. To put this into context, in the upcoming tax sale that's happening in October, there are 265 properties labeled residential with improvement. This means these homes have fallen behind on their property taxes and those properties are, and those properties are heavily concentrated in the Northeast area. Instead of making assumptions about these properties, I went out earlier this week and talked to some of the folks that are on the tax sale list. What I learned is that a lot of these people have owned their homes for years, but fell behind on their taxes because of COVID. The people I talked to were almost entirely on fixed incomes and had additional financial burdens directly caused by COVID-19. The total sum of the back taxes comes to exactly $1 million. Now, it can be assumed that many of these properties are not currently being lived in, and they would not need to be removed from the tax sale list, but many others are currently being lived in. Several hundred thousand dollars of ARP money could be invested into ensuring that people who have lived in our community for years or decades are not forced out of their homes in this place. And speaking of housing, Wyandotte County has a homelessness problem that is unaddressed and worsening. Housing-first solutions to homelessness are needed and should be funded by the ARP funds. This means converting land bank properties into suitable housing and hiring community members to do the rehab to make them livable, a priority that has been identified by Wyandotte County residents who are experiencing housing insecurity. It also means purchasing apartment buildings, such as the currently vacant West High Apartments, fixing them up and converting them into housing. And it means opening a transitional shelter in Wyandotte County for folks experiencing homelessness, because this is something that our county is currently lacking. Housing insecurity is the scariest thing that folks in Wyandotte County are dealing with, and it is exciting that we have this opportunity.
Sir, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Housing insecurity is the scariest thing that folks in Wyandotte County are dealing with, and it's exciting that we have this opportunity in front of us to make a difference in the lives of our residents. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanise Tyler.
Thank you. Once again, Tanise Tyler with Northeast Economic Development Corporation, Executive Director. The first thing I wanted to comment on was the kudos to the Communication Director for Attending New Technology. I think it was pretty cool how the poll and everything worked. However, I have a couple of text messages where my poll didn't go through. Happy to share that with you and work with you on how that could be improved because I'm not sure how many other people may have had an issue. So would love to connect with you offline to share what happened here. In regards to the funding, and I don't know if you all, well, you all should be familiar with the TAP with the Urban League Institute. There was a technical assistance panel that was done where they enlisted the experts or some of the real estate professionals within the area in regards what to do with the Jennifer, Jennifer Garden area. I would recommend that some of the funding go directly towards those efforts that were presented in the TAP. If you are not familiar with that presentation or what was presented, I'll be happy to share the link. There's a whole presentation on that. So I just wanted to provide my input for funding to be looked at to go directly in the Northeast area towards that plan that was developed, and it is in regards to workforce housing, or excuse me, workforce development, housing, and some other things. So if anyone would like the link to that or more information on that, I'll be happy to provide it. And I'm done speaking. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Melvin Williams. Mr. Williams, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. My sentiments is with a lot of people on here with Ms. Wyatt, Broderick. We do have a homeless problem. But at the same time, I would say focus the funds on the Northeast area because during the whole time of the pandemic, the Northeast has been hit the hardest. And before I get off of here, I have a question for my current Commissioner Townsend, Commissioner Townsend. Where are we at on this Northeast Master Plan?
I'm going to ask that this is not really the agenda item that we're bringing. So I ask Commissioner Townsend, please, that's not what this is about. You can have an offline conversation with Mrs. Townsend if you please. If you are done speaking, we'll move to the next speaker.
I would have an offline conversation with her, but my Commissioner never calls nobody back. Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Mamie. Ma'am, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Mr. Springs. My question, well, hi to everyone. My question is, when will we be able to address, everybody sit down and address the systematic racism that is going on? You talk about an economic development plan, but there has nothing really been put in place for the African-Americans. So it'd be nice to like sit down and be able to address that because this is a diverse community, and also this is a free state, and I would like to know when our African-Americans are going to be involved in the economic development plans as well. That's all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Carr. Mr. Carr, you're muted.
Hi, this is Alan Carr. I'm the Executive Director for Visit Kansas City, Kansas, and I'm a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. You know, I want to speak in support of tourism initiatives. As many of you know, the tourism industry has been one of the hardest-hit industries during COVID, and I know one of, one of the categories you're looking at are negatively impacted industries. Our hotels in Wyandotte County have seen approximately 45% decrease in revenues during, in 2000 compared to 2019. That amounts to about $48 million in lost revenue for our hotels here in Wyandotte County. And I know our tourism partners would love to see some opportunities to help make up for some of those losses. But I think one of the things that our tourism partners really want to see is the opportunity to grow tourism and to use these funds to help us grow tourism and make us a more attractive community. And the type of things that visitors are looking for here are really the same thing that residents are looking for. We want to support, we'd love to see programs that will support stronger neighborhoods that will make us a safe and welcoming community that will improve our infrastructure and that will, that will improve our public parks and spaces to make us a more attractive community for visitors. Specifically on tourism initiatives, I think there's two things that we would love to see. One, as Kathleen mentioned earlier, I think there's an opportunity to use some of the funds for some mitigation and prevention program around improving ventilation systems in some of our tourism attractions. And so we would be supportive of those funds. We also would support job training. We know that we have a challenge right now in getting enough hospitality employees to fill our tourism businesses, and we would love to see some funds that we can grow that workforce. This is not only a short-term issue, but it's a long-term issue as we add more hotels and attractions here in Wyandotte County. We need a strong.
Sir, you have one minute remaining.
And we'd love to see some funds dedicated to some, some training programs to get some Wyandotte County residents into some hospitality training and culinary programs here in the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Professor Stafford Gray. Professor, you're muted.
Yes, this is Professor Deborah Stafford Gray, and my, my question is about the ARPA Community Block Grant. What I need to know is, does, does the group from our neighborhood, do we need to get together in order to do this block grant? And the only way to apply would be for the feedback on the website or email? If someone could give me more clarity on that, I'd appreciate it. My concern is we have storm management problems in our area. We have a lot of flooding in our area over here on 67th and Webster. I thank Dr. Jane Philbrook from coming to our residence to see about the problem. But the problem still exists. So as a result, some of us have had to get loans to get our foundations of our houses sealed from the flooding, but there's some engineering that needs to be done in the area. So I would like to see some of the funding goal as for storm management. But I was just concerned about the Community Block Grant Development Plan. Do you need to have a group in order to do it? That's my question, and thank you.
Our next speaker is Susilla Jones. Ms. Jones, you're muted.
Sorry, I was just getting reconnected. Hi, I am Susilla Jones. I am the Executive Director with Cross Lines Community Outreach in Kansas City, Kansas. There are so many great items that have been brought up today, and I can't disagree with anything that, that people are proposing that the ARPA funds get utilized for. I would say that this is, ARPA provides us with the opportunity to take a truly collaborative approach to end homelessness in our community and also create truly affordable and accessible housing. These are challenges that we face every day at Cross Lines, and I fully support everything that Dustin Hare, the recommendations he had for some sheltering options. We also are in full support of converting hotel, a hotel or motel into sheltering options for folks experiencing homelessness, with also the ability to maybe turn that in also to some permanent supportive housing as well. The ARPA funds, from my understanding, can help, help us with that process, and you do have some hotels available that may, may, may fit that. But again, we support sheltering options that provide permanent supportive housing with wraparound services to provide long-term sustainability so that we can address homelessness, not just right now, but in the long term. I would also like to mention I would also like to mention Cross Lines is in Armoredale, so it's in a business in Armoredale. And also, as we work with residents in Armoredale, we face infrastructure issues, specifically stormwater issues, on a continual basis. So we are also in full support of any stormwater issues that we can address specifically within Armoredale to help residents and businesses in our community. So that is what I have. Thank you very much.
We have Louise Lynch seeking to speak.
No, 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 she's already had a chance to speak.
We have no other hands raised.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bach, that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes all the comments by from us for this. We do have this outlined to come back to the commission on August 12th for presentation, so we'll be able to provide additional information for the commission to consider. We'll be able to hopefully weave in some of these comments that we received from the public hearing tonight and any additional feedback. As was noted earlier, we're not in a decision of making final decisions on it. We will be looking to make some immediate decisions and ask for that for commission consideration at the end of August, as we have several things in the area of healthcare that we need to do to continue to to provide our fight against COVID and the variant as it continues to attack our community. I think that's a very serious thing, and we need to direct money for that now by the end of the month. But there, as Ms. Von Atchen outlined as she went through the presentation earlier, there is still money that we'll be able to go through and prioritize in the coming years as we go through this process. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Biden, did you have a question?
Mayor, it's a comment. I appreciate hearing from all the community. And I, you know, really take to heart the technical issues we had and the comments we heard to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible in the ways that we hear from the community and provide opportunities for input. So I just wanted to say that we do have the email address, arpa@wycock.org for anyone that would still like to send an email about ways that they think the ARPA money could be prioritized. Thank you.
All right, we have one last item under the administrative agenda. Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Mayor. After going through a recruitment process and then an intensive interview process and hiring, I am pleased to bring forward a recommendation of Matthew Willard to be the next county appraiser for the Unified Government. Mr. Willard started his, working for the Unified Government in 2006. He worked his way up through our organization. In December of 2016, he was appointed as the Deputy County Appraiser. He's been serving in the interim role in that capacity since the departure of Ms. Briney at the end of June. And this is brought forward to you for confirmation of appointment by the resolution that is set forth in the agenda document tonight. Mr. Willard is here tonight. If we'd like to have him give a nice, long presentation to everyone. He's been sitting here enjoying the meeting for the evening, but appreciate that. But I do recommend Mr. Willard is a very qualified and good resident of our community who is ready to step up and take charge.
I entertain a motion for approval.
McKeonan, so moved.
For Mayor, a second.
I have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Mares.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Hillbrook.
Aye, and I want him to speak for us.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for the evening.
Oh, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor. Mayor, no, Mayor. No, 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 sorry. That's not, no, we need to have him talk so people can meet him. You know, just because administration knows him and the mayor knows him doesn't mean there's other people out there that don't want to meet him and hear a little bit about what he has to say. Please, sir.
Matt, come on up to the microphone there at the table. Introduce yourself and give us a little bit of background.
Good evening, and thank you. One of my favorite things to do is talk. So, no, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all for a minute, Matt Willard. Been with Windot County since 2006, been appraising a bit longer than that. And I really appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that's been shown here tonight. I also want to recognize my staff, because the office wouldn't be anything without the folks that are out there every day, out on the streets and making sure everything moves. So that's, that's it for me, I hope.
Thank you, because at least people get to see your face for a moment to know who's behind a lot of the decisions and how things are being done. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right. Well, now that concludes our meeting for the evening. Thank you for your attendance.